Thank you, Mayor Protem Damian. Currently, the city clerk is not here. She should be joining us at the seven o'clock, so I will conduct roll call. Mayor Protem Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
And Councilmember Hernandez.
I believe Councilmember Hernandez may be running late. Make a motion to excuse him.
Second. Second.
All right, I'll go ahead and open Public Communications. City clerk, do we have anyone? For Public Communication?
No, Mayor Protem.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that none, I'll close Public Communication. We're gonna go ahead and go to our open study session, accessory dwelling units. A presentation that's gonna be presented by Ron Garcia, our Director of Community Development, and Eurico Rieses Barca, Community Services Supervisor.
Good afternoon, staff, Mayor Protem, council. Tonight's presentation is essentially just a brief refresher on what's taking place with accessory dwelling units. I'm gonna cover the first half of the presentation, and then we'll enough to baton over to Eurico. We'll get into presenting information on what's taking place with Measure H as it's tied to accessory dwelling units within the city of Bolden Park. Next slide. So as you recall, months back, we, the Lassar Development, presented a presentation on accessory dwelling units related to homelessness, people who are experiencing homelessness, and also providing accessory dwelling units as a way for providing affordable housing. Again, the question is, why accessory dwelling units? We've provided a list here, and based on our experience in processing the accessory dwelling units, you know, they're being used for family members. ADUs are also used as rental income for those families, and also looking at long-term leasing for accessory dwelling units. The other one that we didn't put in there, Bolden Park, because it is silent, is short-term rentals for Airbnbs. They do exist in other cities. Bolden Park, short-term rentals such as Airbnbs is not allowed per the code. I am aware that some cities, because of the nature of why accessory dwelling units were streamlined by the state, is to create and generate affordable housing. But what they've done in their ordinance is that they've they've required that if you're going to build an accessory dwelling unit, you cannot use them for purposes of short-term rental. Just to add a little context there. The other is, ADUs exist in an attached form to the primary home, or they exist detached. And most of the accessory dwelling units that has come through our office are largely detached, and then the next one is garage conversions. There's a pretty big number of homeowners taking advantage of converting their garage. And then lastly, if you remember, room conversions. So the state law allowed homeowners to convert no more than 500 square feet of their existing square footage of their single-family home. No more than 500 square feet. And that counts as what's called a junior accessory dwelling unit. Again, just a couple things to highlight here, as Lassar mentioned. Again, it's a gentle way of introducing density in your residential neighborhoods. There is a cost per unit, and I have a slide that goes over the specific costs based on a tier of accessory dwelling unit sizes. And then lastly, it provides a benefit to those homeowners, and also provides units for those interested in renting. Next slide. So ADUs process, so we use that timeframe of 20, the last presentation that we did, we did 2018 to 2021. The data that we've gathered, we've included so far this year, 2022. So we've processed, through our Building and Safety Department, have issued 95 accessory dwelling units, and have provided, issued permits, so 95 accessory dwelling units in the form of detached or attached. And then the other one is garage conversions. During this period, we've issued 68 permits for garage conversions. And again, they're spread out throughout the city. In total, between that time period, we have processed 222 applications for accessory dwelling units in the city. One thing that we are finding is that our small lot subdivisions, and when that opportunity does arise, if there is a property large enough to do a subdivision, such as the one that's, for example, in Pacific Avenue, Pacific Communities, the three-story, single-family homes, is that development community is now, when they're proposing a development, they're including the accessory dwelling unit. It's no longer just the single-family home, attached garage or detached garage. They're now including the ADU. In the fifth, as we're coming out of this fifth cycle RENA for our housing element, during that time period, we've issued 81 permits and constructed 81 accessory dwelling units within that time period. For this next RENA cycle for 2001, I mean, I'm sorry, it should have been 2021. 2021 to 2029, which is our existing housing cycle, we're projected approximately to issue 182 ADUs within that time period. But just based on the data that we've provided so far, we are going to exceed that. Again, that, it's a conservative number, but you can see that accessory dwelling units is definitely outpacing just normal residential development. Next slide. So I've shown this slide in the past, just with permit fees and construction costs associated with development of an ADU. So we have provided three tiers, garage conversion. Typically, we find costs about $53, a little over $53,000. With that includes approximate permit fees to accomplish that of about $4,000. It provides additional property tax. For a unit that's $53,000, a little over $53,000, comes out to $535. And the city share at property tax, it comes out to about $51. The next one that we typically see is about a 600-square-foot detached ADU. We've seen costs in the range of like $80,000. And then the permit fees there range $6,000. And that property tax is $803, and then the city share, you see, is about a little over $76. And then the largest of the accessory dwelling units, what we're seeing quite a bit, is the maximum, which is allowed by the state at 1,200 square feet. We're seeing, it just depends, as I've mentioned, types of materials that are used. They can get really fancy depending on the materials that are used within the ADU. It could be upwards of $160,000 or more. So you're looking at permit fees of about $10,000, and that additional property tax at about $1,600, and then the city share about $150. Next slide. So ADU incentives, just to cover some of the concepts that had gone over before in Lassar's presentation. Some of the incentives is targeting different key recipients, and those are low-to-modern-income homeowners. Gives them access to wealth and building opportunity. The other is low-income renters. The other is homeless, high-risk for homelessness and Section 8 recipients. Then just in general, ADUs provide a source of housing, especially given this housing crisis that we're in. Next slide. Just a brief recap of what has taken place in the world of accessory dwelling units in the city specific to adopting ordinances. So in 18, we did an adoption to be in compliance with the changes in state law, 2018. And then in 2020, we've updated our applications to reflect the requirements of state law. And then in 2021, we went through another update based on based on the state's changes to the existing ADU law. Between 2018 and 2020 is when state really streamlined the development of accessory dwelling units, where it's to the, to a point where we've had to, where they've relieved some restrictions such as parking, not having to replace parking because they're converting their garage. Also, how much development impact fees we can charge for each of the units. So far, we've been implementing those changes since 2021. So this is just an overview of the report, which covered current statewide growth of ADUs, recent state legislation, local conditions of the housing demand, covered properties with potential for accessory dwelling units. And then findings, essentially a list, a menu list of policies that the council can enact and think about targeting recipients for accessory dwelling units. Next slide. So in that study, provided recommended actions. One is to update the city website with homeowner-oriented ADU information. We've done that. We're continuing to do that in a couple others. Later on in the presentation, we'll cover how we're going to further develop that. Also, review local development codes and permitting process to simplify construction and reduce costs. We're gonna touch on that a little later. And then provide resources for low-income homeowners to house low-income tenants. The other was consider tenant matching programs. And lastly, bringing unpermitted dwelling units into compliance. One thing I wanted to share on this one is that we had provided data based on the total number of code enforcement cases for illegally converting garages, illegally constructing ADUs. That number was approximately about 95 during that time period, 95 code enforcement. And what was striking is that, that of that number, significant homeowners potentially just converted their space back to its original use without having to move forward with taking permits to convert the garage to an accessory dwelling unit. One takeaway from that was that possibly just didn't have the capital to do so. It's easier for them just to simply go back to the original structure. And then second, we saw a small portion where they did take advantage and say, hey, we can convert. And that's where we work with them to provide those options if the capital is there for them to do so. So there was a small number of homeowners that did take advantage of converting the structure from an illegal standpoint to compliance. Next slide. So providing resources for housing for low-income tenants. One of the options there is providing resources, free designs, and we're gonna get into this. Providing free designs that can simply expedite and streamline the process. Providing financial subsidies, grants tied to maintaining affordability of the unit that can help cover part of the costs of building the accessory dwelling unit. Junior ADUs, converting a portion of the existing houses I mentioned earlier, as a way to reduce the cost. Instead of doing like a 1,200-square-foot detached ADU, they have that flexibility and saying, hey, we're just gonna convert 500 square feet of the existing home. And we'll get into the next one, which is the Back Home Initiative, which is an emerging local effort to build low-cost units to house previously homeless. Next. Tenant matching. We'll get in this as well. And considering tenant matching is connecting low-income seniors with ADUs. Again, there's a rising population with housing needs that can be met through ADUs. And then connecting Section 8 voucher with the production of ADUs. The Housing Authority, again, has housing vouchers. We have about I have that number here. We have about 899 housing vouchers, and of those housing vouchers that are in process is about 470. So there's an opportunity there for Section 8 tying those to accessory dwelling units. Next slide. Unpermitted dwelling units, bringing those into compliance. Evaluating the number of unpermitted ADUs. Again, we went through that exercise. It looks like, you know, a lot of, a portion of the homeowners have decided to simply convert back to its original use. And then there's such programs as creating an amnesty program to ensure that there's life safety. That way, you don't have an illegal unit taking place that has substandard electrical work, and also gas utilities, or not. Building code. Next slide. So simplifying the permitting and construction process for ADUs. So one really neat thing that happened a couple months ago is that we were approached by the San Gabriel Valley Cog. But one of the efforts that we were gonna do already, we had already issued a request for proposals to do this was grant funding, is to develop pre-approved plans, streamline the process of accessory dwelling units. So the cog, just so happened, the cog reached out to me. He said, hey, we're gonna do a, do a project. So far, there's 10 cities that have signed up where they're gonna develop pre-approved plans. And the homeowner can choose right off the shelf one of three pre-approved plans to streamline the permitting process to help them with that. I have found, in my experience here working in Bolden Park, that not a lot of people know how to go through the permitting process. Humsome, a little overwhelming understanding, having to search for an architect and find a contractor. This will relieve part of that stress. And this goes towards the goal of creating additional units in the city. So we've partnered with the San Gabriel Valley Cog. The estimated completion time is gonna be the summer of 2023. So we're gonna be, our staff is gonna be working with the selected consultant from the cog, all paid for by the San Gabriel Valley Cog. They're gonna be providing marketing materials so we can put up, I mentioned in the earlier slides, how we can promote the development of ADUs, provide that marketing material on our website, handouts, so that we can provide that to homeowners within the community. So it's really exciting. Part of that effort is gonna include community engagement along with stakeholders. It's gonna require study sessions with the council, our planning commission, and our residents to develop that program. And it's all gonna be revolved around, again, navigating that permit process and how we can help with that. Again, really excited. So the estimated time there is, next. Next slide. ADU efforts. I think at this point, I'm gonna hand it off to Eurico on the Measure H activities. So we have several activities that are taking place. Since we had the Lassar report come out, it's exciting that some of those recommendations, we are now able to check those boxes. But now I'll hand it off to Eurico.
Thank you, Ron. Mayor and members of, Mayor Protem and members of the city council. We are excited to bring you back a report in regards to the updates. So these efforts around some of the studies that went into this program were funded through Measure H. So we really wanna take an opportunity to close out our Measure H city implementation plan by providing this ADU information broadly throughout our community. So our ADU education and resources will be available via the city website, social media, public outreach at our permit encounter, now that we're back open, as well as an issue of the future Bolden Park Now. And a very exciting piece that we've been working throughout this process is a culmination process, or an education component, that basically provides, you know, education on housing policies. So we will start with a policy, Housing Policy 101. And we incorporate a variety of different efforts in order to help the city achieve its affordability goals in Bolden Park. So we've divided up this kind of webinar-style education process to target all of our community stakeholders, and it'll be a process of three sessions. And individuals are targeted to apply for all three sessions. So it is those community members that want to follow the process along that are available to engage in depth about learning about some of these overviews about our housing needs, strategies to produce specifically in session, well, session one will cover an overview of Bolden Park's housing needs and ways to increase housing affordability. So we will go into detail about those strategies. And then in session two, we would specifically be looking at ADU expansion as an opportunity to include as part of those strategies. So also with the goal of producing and promoting community stability. And lastly, our last webinar session, which is scheduled in November, we will be going over funding these affordable housing opportunities and ending with some conclusions around landlord engagement, around the community stakeholder input process. So really trying to figure out like where, where is the gap for them? Is it in the permitting process? Is it with technical assistance and finding the proper and trustworthy construction firms? Is it, so we really wanna identify like what is prohibiting? Or what is working and what is not working? So that we can develop these educational materials that would be available as an opportunity to increase the ADU access and process for our residents. So with this, we also would be rolling out some interest in exploring the Back Home Initiative survey, which has been rolled out in the cities of South El Monte and El Monte. And we're really trying to have an educated process so that we could be ready when the future NOFA comes up. So next slide, please. I will be going into detail about what the Back Home Initiative, exploring what the Back Home Initiative model looks like and the opportunities that it could bring to our city. And so a Back Home Initiative is a pilot program, and is targeted as an innovative, efficient, and cost-efficient solution to create, to curtail to the unhoused community. But it can also incorporate low income. It will basically provide supportive housing for those at-risk individuals. And the pilot program aims to construct and maintain a minimum of 150 furnished, moving-ready units across the three cities. The units would be approximately 255 square foot, or with the potential to be larger. And it'll, they will be equipped with all necessary amenities. The cost is about $114,000 for the units, but there are essential pieces of this that are free of charge to the homeowners. So the first one, rely around ADU construction and maintenance. The support services for the tenant and homeowners. And number three, it also provides an added incentive of up to $1,000 of a monthly stipend for homeowners through participation in this type of program. There is a duration timeframe of 15 years. And to initiate the program, homeowners can submit the intent to participate in the formal Back Home Initiative contract process once that, once those community engagement meetings with the HCD have been established. So at this point, it is kind of a framework and innovation, kind of really prepping our city to be ready for this type of opportunity and engaging the landlords on what it is that they see, if they, if they can see this as a potential fit that might meet their needs. So a formal structure of educating the HCD will be, we will be invited to help inform the next process of their Home Key NOFA. And this would explicitly fund models like the Back Home Initiative if it's something that they find would align with their Home Key 3.0 strategies. So as you know, Back Home Initiative, or the Project Home Keys have primarily targeted motel conversions, but we are trying to propose this and ask an alternative form to educate the NOFA that something like this could potentially, could have the potential to also help create ADUs. I am, Bolden Park's goal is to introduce this process to the landlords and gauge their interest via a survey that they can complete when they participate in the academy. But it'll also be available via citywide marketing outlets, of course, our Housing Academy, and also by capturing target audiences at our permitting office. Next slide. Yeah. So that, of course, if I pass it back to Ron, if there's any questions, we are excited to share more.
Thank you, Eurico. One last thing I wanted to mention is the Housing Academy that Eurico just briefly went over. We're gonna make note, but the Housing Academy isn't really just housing in general. It is gonna cover just context so people in the Housing Academy understand housing needs, where we're at. But really, it's geared towards accessory dwelling units. So it's like an ADU Housing Academy, because we're really gonna promote the development of accessory dwelling units and seeing where that need is. Or affordability. You happy to answer any questions?
Great, thank you, Ron. Does anyone have any questions, any of my council colleagues? None. I do have a question for you, Eurico. When you were going over the presentation under the the Housing Academy, for the 255-square-foot ADU, you mentioned that the cost is approximately $114,000. Is that per every unit of 255 square feet?
That, I believe that is correct. We do have Richard on the line, who's aware of the most updated pricing. Richard Corral is from, he's one of our members of our Mid Valley Collaborative, and he can provide that information, Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for your question. Thank you, Eurico, for facilitating and your leadership on this amazing and innovative ADU Housing Academy. To answer your question, Mayor Protem, the cost per unit by itself as a standalone is approximately $155,000. However, as the project goes to scale and we increase the number of units from potentially 150 upwards to 200 and 250, 300, the price drops because of the unique modular manufacturing process that built the ADUs located in Downey, California. So as the number of units increases, the price does drop to approximately $114,000. However, if you were to buy a standalone one-off, it would be approximately $155,000. So there is advantages to economies of scale. And of course, Eurico and other staff have actually visited the modular ADU factory in Downey, California, that creates the Back Home Initiative ADUs. And of course, council is also invited. We usually host a tour, on average, about one, no more than two per month in Downey, California.
Got it. So the standalone, it's, so they're modular units, and they're already completely furnished, correct, for the, for the cost?
Including utensils in the drawer. You are correct.
Got it, okay.
And Mayor Protem, if I may add, that 150 that we were targeting was the minimum requirement per HCD. If that was their kind of target goal. So it'll be 150 units throughout the Mid Valley Collaborative.
That's correct. We said no one city is going to be asked to provide 150 units on their own. That's why we, we thought 150, not only in terms of bringing down the price for economies of scale purposes, but also For economies of scale purposes, but also we felt that it would be reasonable based upon the number of permits that are being requested for ADUs. Which you shared earlier today, as well as El Monte also has a very high number of ADU permits. And so we felt that a hundred and fifty would be a good goal to work towards across. All three cities based upon the level of interest, based upon the number of permits submitted. And also based upon the number of Section Eight vouchers, which you touched upon, which was touched upon earlier today, which would be the primary. Tool, financing mechanism to pay for the rental of the units across the program period.
So would these, would these modular dwellings be set and say as an example, I have space in my backyard. You go and you place one of these modular units in my backyard and I pay you a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, or how does that work?
Actually, there is no cost at all to the homeowner. It is completely one hundred percent government subsidized. It is one hundred percent free of charge. That includes the construction, that includes the maintenance, that includes the stipends, the monthly stipend of upward, upwards of one thousand. Dollars per month. The program period is no more than fifteen years, but on average, ten years. Because that's one-third of the average thirty-year mortgage is ten years. So we wouldn't want to overburden homeowners with a cumbersome program. Above and beyond fifty percent of their mortgage time period, which would be no more than fifteen years. There's nothing to pay back. There's no low interest loan. There's no, none of that. It's one hundred percent financed and we did that based upon the fact that there have been programs. That have been launched in the city and the county of Los Angeles that required. A loan to pay back even though it was low interest and that for some folks is in fact a barrier to entry.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it.
I have a question. Mayor Protem?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I think it's, I love the idea and I love the program. So I have a question. Once, let's say Mr. Damon decides to put these modulators. In his property, how do we make sure that the rent is affordable for individuals? Is there something in place already to make sure it will be affordable?
So there's two requirements for participation in the program as a tenant. The first is that you need to be part of a coordinated entry system. Which is only for individuals and families who are either at risk or are currently experiencing homelessness. The second thing is that part of being enrolled in the coordinated entry system and being eligible for this program is that you must have a voucher. And the coordinated entry system lead agency, which is Union Station. As well as some of the other coordinated entry system agencies assist. Clients and participants to secure vouchers. These are the two requirements that would ensure that the program is compensated. The Section Eight rent that is associated, each different regions have different rents. And actually, I think that you showed it in a slide, approximately how much for a one-bedroom, a Section Eight voucher would provide. That would be provided to the nonprofit program administrator. A portion of which would then would be provided as a stipend on a monthly basis to the homeowner.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And how long does that have to stay like that? For it to be affordable?
So eight, Section Eight. Compensation and rental. Adjustments are made periodically based upon the market. So it's a federal, you know, a calculation that sets the Section Eight, or actually, I think it's, my apologies. I think it's actually the Baldwin Park Housing Authority in partnership with the federal government that sets that compensation for Section Eight. Vouchers. So that does can and will probably change over the ten to fifteen year program period.
Okay, so, so just to be clear, and you probably said this. This would only be for those that are in the voucher program experiencing homelessness. Or they're at risk. So the owner of the property would not just be able to rent that to anybody else, correct? They have to be in the specific program.
For the duration of the program, it is, it is for the participation and the duration of the program. Of the Back Home Initiative is explicitly designed for individuals and families who are either at risk or experiencing homelessness. But is, the program is not designed for individuals with chronic homeless, that experience chronic homelessness and/or. With severe mental health or substance abuse issues. Since this is not permanent supportive housing, it's more supportive housing. It's not appropriate for all populations. It's more appropriate for populations that are again, are either at risk or have just recently experienced homelessness. Or are ready to transition out of, transition of temporary housing. So what we call low acuity individuals and families, such a fancy way of saying not the high-risk population.
Perfect. Can you answer my next question about the individuals that would be qualifying for this? Thank you.
And the mayor is back, so mayor, I will hand over the meeting back to you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. So just to double check, is there any more questions or concerns from staff or council?
Yes, I have a question. This is Councilmember Garcia. Thank you for the presentation to our staff and to Richard. My question is, and let me first start by saying that because of the state law. And the city's response regarding ADUs. You know, my thinking was if ADUs are going to be. Growing in our community, then we might as well think of a policy that can serve families, seniors. Possibly youth that are at risk of becoming homeless to prevent homelessness. And I'm glad to hear Richard, you know, mention that and specify that we're not looking at the high-risk chronic homeless. But we're looking at preventative measures. And so my next question is, you know, I, I've owned property and have rented property. And as part of the process, I usually will conduct a background check. And make sure that, you know, that tenant is a match for not only my unit. Or my property, but also the neighborhood. And so my question is, do we have something like that in place? And can we, can we utilize that kind of tool for this program, for this policy?
So really quick, thank you, Councilwoman, thank you, Councilwoman Garcia. This is Richard again. Part of the coordinated entry system is that. Has, they have a partnership, Union Station Homeless Services does, does have an existing partnership as well as other agencies. With the LEASUP program as well as other programs that the county who, whose job explicitly is to do, provide matchmaking. And they do matchmaking within the existing local and statewide laws that protect both tenants. As well as homeowners and renters. To ensure that number one, it's a fit, number one, that there's a screening process, number two. But there's actually an interview process in which the homeowner does actually get to interview the tenants. And again, these are all existing rules and regulations that apply to Section Eight. That apply to, you know, any, any individual who's either a property owner or tenant. So it's not like there's any sort of unique special laws. It's just the application of the existing laws through what they call matchmakers that are specifically trained to match. Property owners with individuals in the coordinated entry system.
Councilmember Garcia, just to add to what Richard was mentioning, and again, this is just, it's in its early stages of, of development. But in discussions with our housing authority, the closest thing that we do have. Active right now, not related to accessory dwelling units, but just units in general, is our emergency housing vouchers. And those get, the emergency housing vouchers, we have about forty-five. Housing vouchers, they, those EHVs, per the rules have to be leased by twenty twenty-three. We have a couple that have been leased. And they pay up to a hundred and twenty percent of the fair market for rent. Again, as Richard mentioned, as we develop this program, is we get referrals from LASSA. And it has to be a, a, a good match. Some of the, the referrals that come, sometimes are associated with mental health issues. As Richard mentioned, it has to, there's a match process. But of those, the Section Eight would be, if this were to move forward, is really exploring more on the Section Eight. Because Section Eight voucher goes with the tenant. And I'm sure through this program, there'll be a minimum number of years. I believe, Richard, you had mentioned that this program would be fifteen years minimum?
No more, no, no more than fifteen years, average ten years. And again, that's based upon an average thirty-year mortgage. We don't want to occupy the space. Longer than fifty percent of the time, which would be fifteen years. But ideally, only a third of the time, which is ten years. After which the ADU is given to the property owner free and clear. Meaning that they can then do whatever they want with it. There are caveats in terms of, and how do I say? There are off-ramps to the program, which I won't get into today, but there are definitely ways for homeowners to exit the program. But still ensuring that the investment remains within the public.
Thank you, Richard. Yeah, so the Section Eight again goes with the, with the tenant. And potentially could exceed more than fifteen years. Because you can have Section Eight tenants with vouchers that live in units that are twenty-five, thirty years, a long period of time. But those vouchers are available and those vouchers would be drawn from just the recent waiting list for the Section Eight, those five thousand. That were just selected as part of the waiting list for Section Eight. And as part of that process, we can determine some of those parameters as Councilmember Garcia mentioned. Seniors, people experiencing homelessness. And so that can be part of that, that process.
And I, I do want to understand the off-ramps a little bit more in future discussions. Because I do like, you know, I like the idea of, let's say. A property owner signs up for the program and realizes that it's not a match for them. You know, how they would opt out, because fifteen years is a long commitment. So again, it's just for the health of our neighborhoods and making sure that both property owner and tenant. You know, gain the, the quality of life from this program. So yeah, I'd like to hear about that as we move along in this process. But I think it's absolutely worth, you know, exploring this further. And so thank you for the information provided this evening.
Absolutely.
And if we may add, we do have an upcoming HCD meeting that will help further educate this process. And once again, this is a lot of advocacy that's taking place across all three cities. So as it stands, the program is not fully fleshed out or it doesn't align. You know, apples to apples to what a traditional home key application process looks like. But we are trying to educate the process along the way. So that we can encourage these types of development to be an eligible project for that. Type of funding that of course, across a hundred and fifty units across three cities is a big ask. But that, but there is opportunities to help with the framework of the HCD process. So that's also our intent to demonstrate by, by incorporating local landlords of the, of, of how it would. Be implemented in a local, local community like Baldwin Park. So if there is enough interest, then we could present this to HCD. And let them know that this is a viable process once all of the, their guidelines where we can align with, with their requirements as well.
Mayor, if I make, if I may make a comment, I, I wanted to highlight just the sheer numbers alone, Ron. Earlier, you talked about how the number of ADUs, whether already constructed. Already permitted and those that are in the pipeline, whether it's going through the planning process and what have you. Totally, total approaching four hundred or so roughly that number. And how that is outpacing the number of other type of residential unit development. Just that alone is incredible, if not staggering, just the interest that this has picked up in the last two years. To the point that it's now, we have to consider it a mainstream sort of housing development element. Of the housing stock in the city. And then being able to anticipate how the best leveraging that housing stock that's occurring and it's all natural market forces. I mean, yes, we are providing more information, more permitting. Facilitating more the permitting process and other, other types of, of measures. But it's largely occurring on its, on its own market forces. And it's, it, it seems to still be growing. And so, you know, how do we capitalize on that? The idea of the, of the Back Home Initiative is one example. There could be others as well. So I, I think I, I just was so encouraged by the numbers alone.
Yes, thank you. I forgot to mention earlier, I brought a copy of, I'm not sure if Baldwin Park gets it, but just seeing it in my own neighborhood. There's a pamphlet for localists, advertise, you know, you know, pool contractors and, you know, re-roofing. But the majority of this pamphlet here that we get is advertising contractors for the development of accessory dwelling units and garage conversions. They have, you know, really neat pictures in here. But that is the, that is what's going on. That is the, the new. Thing that's going on in, in housing development these days. One other last thing that I forgot to mention, it's gonna be coming to the council. In the next meeting or two, is part of that streamlined process. And the, the state law essentially indicated that city can only require. And because of the need and because of the, 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 the large activity. In the construction of ADUs. Is that we cannot rely on our own development standards for architecture, site design. Unless we have city-approved, adopted what is called objective design standards. State essentially has tied cities' hands where us planners can no longer say, well, you have to provide some alternative materials. It cannot be subjective, has to be very, very specific. And so to be in compliance with state law, we're going to be going through an exercise, selecting a consultant to review. And revise our architectural standards because, again, because just with our residential development, we want good design. Good architecture, we want the best. We want it to look aesthetically pleasing. So we need to incorporate those standards and as part of that, streamlines the process. Because it, it provides clear direction to development community and those homeowners. But this is the expectation. So by doing that, we have that other layer of complying with state law. For objective design standards. They were very clear in the law. And it, it. It, it was a little. It was, it's just like poking at the planners throughout California that we could no longer work with them and, and provide ideas. We had to refer to a, a specific objective design standards. So that's gonna be coming and that's, that also, again, as I mentioned, add another layer of streamlining the process. Thank you.
And then Ron, if I could just chime in really quick. I know that there's been an uptick in interest in ADUs. Especially since the CalHafa rolled out a forty thousand dollar ADU grant. To help cover some of the plans, soil testing and all of that. So that's really got a lot of people more interested in it. However, with that comes a lot of issues where. People don't know who to trust when it comes to contractors, construction work. And I mean, me myself, I'm being a guinea pig right now because I'm currently in the process of an ADU. And I've had my fair share of run-ins with some of the workers that I've hired. So, you know, for a lot of our residents, we have maybe kind of set some type of educational piece. Some type of educational material, how to select the contractors, what to look for. Because these people are, are very smart, you know, a lot of these people that are in. These scams, you know, they go in, they do a little bit of work, they collect the money and then they're gone. They're never seen again. That's happened to quite a few people that are. They collect the money and then they're gone. They're never seen again. Um that's happened to quite a few people that I've spoken to lately. Um it happened to someone, one of my neighbors across the street, probably within the last uh year or two. Um so maybe come up with some type of educational piece to let our residents know how to select these contractors, these workers. Um and what can be done if this ever happens to one of them.
Yes, Mayor Protem, you bring up a great point. Just the other day, um myself and the associate planner were going on inspection. We felt really bad for the homeowner. Um and the contractor has disappeared. Uh and they got this ADU that is halfway done. And um you can tell that, you know, these people that have, you know, taken out equity out of their homes, these are their life savings. This is their. Um uh their life savings and uh and those situations unfortunately happen. We're we're in the process of trying to help her um uh with that situation. But uh in the end, it's unfortunate because sometimes they feel like their hands are tied because they don't know how to navigate uh that world. Um but you bring up a good point and absolutely, we can come back, uh institute some educational uh workshops on that.
I have a question based on um Councilmember or Mayor Protem Damian's comments. Um because I have heard of the same situations happening, people coming in and they start a project and they're gone once they've collected partial money. Is there any way or is there anything in place that we can uh do backgrounds on these contractors? Be- because the city comes to us or the contractors are supposed to come to us for permits or what have you. Is there any way we can check on these contractors to make sure they're legitimate and that they have not been reported. Uh as scammers, for example, in different cities? Is there anything we can do about that?
Yeah, one of the one of the requirements before the building uh issuance of building permit. Um is our building staff checks the state licensing to make sure that the state license is valid. And they don't have any um uh uh that their their license isn't delinquent.
Mm-hmm.
I'm I'm in the process of looking further into that to see if um as we all have probably done home projects. Where we have to hold our interviews, um is a uh where it's public record. Where we can go in and look in a database to see what the history is. Because even though the the license may not be delinquent, it may have a history.
Right.
They may have a history there and that's important uh as you're you're going to spend significant amount of money.
Right, because these are individuals that are coming are coming into our city conducting business. So we want to make sure and protect our residents if there's any way to make sure that they are not going to run off with their money. That we have also checked on them to make sure they are legitimate and that they do follow through with their work and uh are reliable. So if we can have something like that in place, that would definitely help, especially those of us that don't know anything about construction. You can tell me, you know, it will cost so much to run your electrical. And in reality, that's not the cost because we don't know we're gonna, okay, yeah, we'll we'll pay that much. But we need to make sure these contractors are legitimate, that they're honest and that they are providing the best services for our residents. Because our goal is to make sure that when they do build the the ADUs, they are getting the best possible deal. For these um homes that they're building because they're doing it to help themselves and to help others as well. So if we can find a way to protect them from these um corrupted contractors that come into our city. Thank you.
And if I may add, uh Ron and members of the city council, we also want to ensure that this information is um provided. Through uh culturally sensitive and in the language, primary language of our residents. So sometimes we talk about ADUs, you know, if you're talking to, you know, someone just coming in new to the process. They don't necessarily understand what an eight, a proper ADU term or JADU or or all of these terms that are kind of lingo. For planners, for city staff, but not necessarily to um uh you know, locals and and residents. Depending on the type of technical assistance that they need, I think uh we also ensure that the information is provided. Once the it the education information is out, um part of the technical assistance, we ensured that there was a clause for equity. Uh linguistics and that it's culturally relevant.
Ron, um let me chime in on this conversation. So I know that there's a larger challenge, you know, when we're looking at ADUs and contractors to address. But if we're looking at specifically the city-sponsored program or, you know, the program that we were talking about earlier. Um Back Home Initiative and the city's involvement, then I would. I would like to explore the possibility of having a short list of contractors that have already been approved. And um you know, verified by the city with bonding and everything. Um I think we currently have that practice for other housing programs. And so it's something worth exploring, you know, for publicly funded projects. So something to to think about as we move along.
Oh absolutely, um Councilmember Garcia, yeah, we'll definitely look into that. I am aware, the the one trouble is with cities, but again, publicly funded. Um we can definitely explore short list of uh of contractors.
Well, if there's no more questions or comments, I want to thank staff, Ron and Eureka for uh for this presentation, very important. Especially in the uh with the housing crisis that we currently face, not just in the city but in the region. And so I think we are ready to move to recess, to a closed session.
Thank you for that.